Our second public hearing for the mobile, mobile manufactured homes. Call this meeting ordered. Mr. Patterson, you lead us into the.
Right, sir.
Everyone please, right. Prayer. Great Lord, heavenly Father, we just come to you right now thanking you for your blessings that you've given each, uh, each one of us individually and with the county. Lord, we, uh, we ask that you give us wisdom right now as commissioners, Lord. We want to never forget the awesome responsibility we have as commissioners. And we don't, we don't want to do anything that would not be pleasing in your side. We want you to have your presence here, not just your presence, Lord, but your guidance. And we thank you for each and every individual here. We just want you to protect us and forgive us every sins in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
Yes, your amendment, please, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, y'all. Remove the seat. So again, this is, uh, this will be our second public hearing. This is, uh, an amendment to the ordinance of Fannin County Mobile and Manufactured Homes. Um, and just in a nutshell, laws have changed, uh, that no longer require the decal to be placed on the mobile home. And, um, we are removing a section, and I'll read that once again. Uh, it's section forty-six dash twenty-three of, uh, of the mobile home, uh, manufactured mobile home ordinance. And it says, "Location disclosure and decal required. Every person holding title to or possessing a mobile home, manufactured home which is placed or located within the limits of Fannin County shall report the location to and obtain a location, uh, decal for said mobile home, manufactured home from the tax commissioner of Fannin County annually, no later than April first of each year. Such location decals shall be designed in such a manner as affixed to the mobile home, manufactured home in such a manner as to cause it to be easily visible for inspection." That section out there is the only amendment to this, and we will be removing that section. So with that being said, we'll, once again, open it up to, uh, public commentary. Public hearing, questions, anything? Um, if anybody's got anything they'd like to add, subtract, raise your hand, and we'll go from there. Anybody jump up, please? Thank you.
I'm blessed.
What do we deserve? All right. Hearing enough public commentary, I'll make a motion to adjourn and ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Patterson, once again, you lead us into the.
I serve the.
Right, please.
Everyone please bow your heads. Gracious heavenly Father, we want to come to you right now again, just asking you to bless this meeting and everyone in it. Lord, help us to act reasonably and responsibly, Lord, respectfully, uh, and help us to do your will, Lord, because your will is always perfect. Thank you again for all these people that are out, uh, concerned with Fannin County. Help us as leaders not to ever forget our, uh, our great responsibility we have as leaders to do what is right and just in your side. Thank you again for all these things, forgive us every sins in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Your amendment, please, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, so under unfinished business, we had the approval of the amendments of May twenty-seventh meeting, twenty twenty-five, regular scheduled board meeting. Uh, Commissioner Cersey, any errors or omissions of those minutes?
No, sir. You see?
Mr. Patterson?
I have none, Chairman, thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve those minutes and ask for a second.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Sir. So there are new visas? Uh, number one, we have a various request from James and Julia.
Julia.
Julia, okay, forgot that, I'm sorry. Um, Norquist?
Yes.
To build a greenhouse ten feet from the property line on Wild Turkey Lane. Is there anybody here opposed to this various request? I assume you're here for it, right? And support it. All right, so, um, gentlemen, I, I know, um, went out and took a look at this. I, the only thing that we were waiting on was the, uh, we always, when it's that close to a property line, I like to try to get, um, a letter of support from the, the neighboring property owner.
Right, right.
And it looks like that did come through, um, earlier today, I believe. So, um, with that being said, I, I didn't have any issues. And, uh, Commissioner Cersey, could you?
No, sir, he's done. No, I didn't see anything, he's ten feet from it. That's about what we've been staying with.
Commissioner Patterson?
I'm good, Chairman.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve this various request, and I'll ask for a second.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
So the next one, this gentleman's has to do with the, uh, public hearings we've been just having, uh, just having. Um, and it's the amendment to the ordinance of the, uh, mobile manufactured homes. But I would, um, I would open this up for any discussion before we make a, uh, a motion.
I think it's long overdue, and it's a state law now, they changed it, and so I think we have to basically follow suit with it.
Now, Chairman, when we do this, uh, that means that we don't have to cut through all the red tape. Is that correct?
That's it. In other words, we remove that, they don't have to, uh, get a decal to put on the mobile home, manufactured home anymore. So it's just.
Do we have to re-up this thing every year?
No, sir. Once we amend this to.
It's done.
To take out that section, that's it.
So it's not a, a one-year or five-year, you know?
No, sir. Not unless the state says, "Nah, we changed our mind, we gotta go back to the old one."
All right, well, I'm good.
All right. With that being said, I'll make a motion to amend, um, the mobile home manufactured home ordinance to remove the section that was earlier read. I'll make that motion and ask for a second.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so then we have our, uh, Fannin County Reg Director Eddie O'Neill regarding the City Park equipment. City Park, right? City Park, right there.
Yeah, I want to replace the, uh, windscreen that the tennis courts up there, they're tattered and shredded all pieces. Uh, so it would be, come out of my Splotz budget, it would be to the windscreen factory, one word, windscreen, for five thousand three sixty-nine fifty. We'll take the old out and replace it with the.
Give me that number again.
Fifty-three sixty-nine and fifty pennies.
Second, they can take it, pick it up.
They might work on it.
How long does that usually last, Eddie?
Uh, if they're done right, and this is within install, they'll last about seven, eight years. But if you do it right, with, and buy the windflaps, they got a half-inch windflapper on that, lets the wind through. They'll last ten, ten years.
We, we have them, the, Owen?
No, the Owen is the old style, it's just.
So this is an upgrade?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Good.
Gentlemen, any discussion on this?
I have none, Chairman.
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'll make a motion to, uh, replace the, uh, windscreen, um, section over there at the tennis courts.
Tennis courts.
All right, and now fifty-three sixty-nine fifty to Rex's Wast, where it'll be coming out of. I'll make that motion and ask for a second.
I second it.
All in favor?
Ah. Eddie, Eddie, can I ask you a quick question? How's the, uh?
Get out of there.
I'm trying to drill.
I know, I'm trying to get away, Eddie. How's those, uh, pickleball courts golf camp?
Pickleball courts at Tamman Park are being painted as we speak, so it's, uh, should be open maybe by the end of next week. They just can't paint in the rain, they can't take that thing, so it's closed. All we'll like is paint it, I'll open it up for play, and then we'll windscreen that too, which was in progress. So, uh, it's almost.
What have you done at Tamman?
We have put, we rebuilt the restrooms, we've added six pickleball courts, remodeled both pavilions, and we are building the, redoing the whole fishing deck, we didn't need money. And it's almost.
You get the parking lot paid?
No, the parking lot's not paid yet. That'll be the last.
That's at Tamman?
That's at Tamman, correct. Yeah, there'll be six courts there.
What about the disc golf?
Disc golf is coming this summer, yeah.
Where's it gonna be?
It's gonna be at the, it'll go from the top to the end as you come in the Tomboy Park.
Yeah.
There'll be hole one, it'll go down the hill, it crosses the road, and it comes back across and comes back up to the top of the end. So it's a nine-hole disc golf course, yeah.
Okay.
You want to get things going?
Yeah.
Is there any cost to that, or is it just?
Yeah, I think it was twenty-five thousand, I think, part, it was part of the, that and the laser grant, we're putting, yeah, something, twenty-five thousand to do it all, yeah. Put the tee boxes and the baskets, it's not, it's not, not really expensive. I mean, that's a lot of money, but it's not expensive for what you would think.
Are we gonna charge, or?
No, I think we'll just open it up for play.
Let it go.
Yeah.
Be a good exercise.
Yeah, it's good use of that land, it's just kind of hilly anyways.
It'll be, and, uh, it's still popular.
Yeah, it is popular, yeah, it is, it is popular.
I got some folks who like it.
Yeah.
Good deal.
Have we, uh, have we checked on putting Lady Ada at the other entrance?
Yeah, I've been waiting on, uh, I talked to Candace, Keith Sumner was gonna donate it. Well, I'm gonna buy just the sign itself, that he's gonna be on the frame and all. As soon as Keith gets the sign and it plays, then I was gonna do the Summer game. I talked to Dick, this entry, about that too, I know you spoke to him.
Is that down there at Tamman?
No, that will be at Tomboy, on the new entrance, a new capture, I'll pay you off, yeah. Yeah, all right. Yeah, it's open right now, and those kids play, uh, play at eleven o'clock at night. Pickleball.
So is it lit up? Is it lit up, Mike?
It is lit up at, at, uh, Tomboy Park, yeah. It's lit, but the gate, the gate's on the other end on Tomboy Road, it closes, but you can still come in right now off Hancock and get George Charles, and then get to the park there. So it's really popular among the kids, and they go out there and play.
Yeah, people that are joining.
Yeah, it's not a bad thing, so everything's good. Pool's open, it's, it's rolling, and summer day camps open, it's for them. So, uh, turn people away as always for that, but it's a busy time right now. We hosted a thirty-three team tournament two weeks ago, we hosted a twenty-nine tournament, twenty-nineteen tournament last week, well, it was a small tournament this week, and then the Big Softball World Series will be next week. So, God's done a good job, they fought, ran, and worked, but gotta be, so.
Good.
A long, long hour, but they made it happen, so.
That's good.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Making some money.
Yeah, making some money.
Good job, Eddie, thank you. All right, next we have Ms. Norris, uh, Judicial Finance Officer and Grants Administrator regarding Superior Court Budget Amendment.
Hi, how good are you?
Doing well.
Um, we're asking for a two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand four-hundred-and-sixty-one dollar amendment to the Superior Court Budget. The great news is that that is one-hundred percent grant-funded, so cost of the county zero. Um, this is ours, you guys know, this is our third year with this ARCA grant. It ends December thirty-first, but we were able to obtain six-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand three-hundred-and-twenty-four extra dollars that became effective June first. Um, of that six-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-seven four-sixty-one is allocated to Fannin, um, to redo all of the audiovisual in the magistrate probate courtroom, the juvenile courtroom, and then install digital recording systems in all four, uh, two Superior Court probate magistrate juvenile court courtrooms. By the time that we're finished with this grant, December thirty-first, all courtrooms in the circuit at all levels of court will have all brand-new audiovisual and digital recording systems. So, yeah, we'll, we'll be, um, in addition to other things that we've been able to find, I think total of this grant, it's about three-point-two million that we've gotten in three years, so.
That's great.
Yes.
Wonderful.
Yeah. I can remember for you guys, when we had circuit budget meetings, all of the chairman, finance directors, Judge Weaver, elected officials come to that meeting, and we would sit and have long conversations about how to fund these audiovisual projects, 'cause it was so expensive and we just couldn't. Um, so as bad as COVID was, there were some things that came out of it. Um, this ARCA money has helped us a great deal.
Well, that's fantastic. Gentlemen, any discussion?
No, sir.
I have none.
All right, so I'll make a motion, uh, to approve this budget amendment, uh, for the Superior Court, and I'll ask for a second.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so number five brings us to, uh, MA Director Patrick Goode, Fire Chief Larry Thomas, regarding the ACCG Safety Grant.
So we've been fortunate enough to get the ACCG Safety Grant in this year. Uh, that's in the amount of eighty-five hundred dollars. We'd like to use that grant to purchase wild animal equipment for rush fires. Um, so the total on that is eighty-five hundred ninety-eight dollars. So we'd be able to talk about ninety-eight, a little bit of shipping. We'd like to request that as possible.
Larry, you gonna pay the ninety-eight and ship it?
Sure.
Yeah, all right, yeah. So you got your grant for eighty-five hundred?
Eighty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
We're taking the difference.
That will come out of the, uh, general fund of the principal.
Ninety-eight plus shipping?
Ninety-eight plus shipping. Probably a hundred and fifty total.
Gentlemen, any discussion on this?
I have none.
Um, I truly believe it's no brainer. I think this year seems like we, we've had more, uh, more of them, well, called wild animal fires. Um, seemed like that we've had in, in a couple years past.
Several this year.
So, um, I think, uh, I think this would be huge, uh, moving forward to get this gear, most, you know, all the time right there in blue jeans and teachers, right, so this'll make it a little bit safer.
Most of our members, they don't have their own wild animal shirt, some already have, but this shipping, they're not, it's a shirt.
Now, they, that, that won't make it blend in with any other agency, but. All right, um, gentlemen, I'll make a motion to approve this purchase of eighty-five ninety-eight plus shipping. Eighty-five hundred coming from the ACCG Safety Grant, ninety-eight plus shipping coming from general fund, and a pro, some amount of total of a hundred and fifty dollars. I'll make that motion and ask for a second.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all. All right, so what we have is, uh, it's an MOU between Fannin County Board Commissioners and North Georgia Community Action, uh, which is actually, that's, um, Area Transportation Service. Did I mention this? I did, I skipped Marie Woody, I'm sorry, I didn't check. So let's go back, my apologies. Um, we have Lodge Administrator Marie Woody, regarding the science stacks, Lodge Software. I'm trying to say you quite, best of luck.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Commissioners, Chairman. Um, I just want to give you an update on our revenue first. Um, it's looking good for this year. Um, we've collected one billion seven-hundred eighty-eight thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars and fifty-two cents. That's an increase, uh, from last year at this time of fifty-eight thousand five-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents. Um, but I'm here to talk about the software. Uh, with the board's approval, we'd like to replace the software that we currently have with a company called Casell. Uh, Fannin County Financials is already using that program. The total cost for this year will be eleven thousand six-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars. And going forward, it will cost fifty-four-hundred-and-twelve dollars per year. Uh, this would be a savings of the county just for this year of a hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand six-oh-nine, uh, from the present company that we have. The present company's not used so friendly with our customers or with our staff. They've made a lot of mistakes in the software and credits, et cetera, with our, um, others. So it's not initially what they promised to the county.
Well, that's a handy sentence, I can take it now.
Yes, yes.
Um, so. Casell is what you've now.
It's currently what we use.
And this is actually purchasing another module, basically?
It is, yes, it's another module, yes. Initially for the setup, it's gonna be eleven thousand six-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars, but going forward, the maintenance is just fifty-four-hundred-and-twelve per year.
Will it do everything that we were promised on this other?
There's a couple of items that it won't do, and that's finding all the short-term rentals. But the other company never did, they did not complete that task until the first time they did anything like that was November fifteenth of twenty-four. So they have found some cabins that is, uh, out there. I think that, um, we probably can go online and find those cabins ourselves. Uh, we just need to be proactive with it and just try to capture all of them.
This is gonna make your job a lot easier to do, though, right?
It is, because we'd be able to get fail reporting. The reports that we tried to get from this company have not been good. They, they just, they can't get the reports together.
And that throws you behind.
And every month, they're crediting, the customers can't see it, but they're crediting customers' accounts to the ten of sometimes a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand a month. Last month it was thirty-one thousand. And I have to call them every time and let them know that they're placing credits in there. And I've let them know that ever since August of twenty-four. And here we are, um, June of twenty-five, and it's still happening.
And what changed to this company way about two years ago?
One year ago.
One year ago.
July the first, just when they went active, July first, twenty-four.
And they told us it was gonna be really, really good. It was really, really bad.
It's like fried chicken last day.
Yeah. Well, the savings is what I like, I mean.
Well, the customers will actually, Marie, uh, they will actually still be able to go online and do their tax files, just like they did.
Just like we're currently doing, yeah.
So, so the staff will not have that, that tax on them. They can, the customers will still go online and make their tax files.
Right, we, we don't have to go do their files for them, they'll be able to go and pay their own files and accounts, et cetera.
Register.
All the working aspects is gonna be basically the same?
Yes, sir.
Okay, got you.
I think the reporting is gonna be a whole lot better than what we currently have with the company that we have.
But the savings is what's gonna be, but it doesn't point to, would you save what was it?
A hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand six-hundred-and-nine dollars per year if we stayed with the company that we're currently with.
Which they actually got a three percent increase annually.
Yeah, a three percent increase annually. I don't feel like this company, Casell, will do that. I mean, it might go up a few dollars, but it's not gonna go up a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, we've been with them how long?
We've been with them, uh, since two thousand seventeen, so.
And we've gotten good service?
We've gotten good service. Uh, they're in Utah, but, uh, they're two hours behind us, and anytime we have an issue, they call us back on the same day. And usually.
This is the new one you're talking about?
Yeah, this is Casell. And, uh, so they usually call us back within at least two or three hours for customer service.
And all we had to do in the beginning was just buy that module, quit and up that.
Yeah, we currently have the business license module, um, but we don't have the tax collection module, so that will be the addition, so.
Oh, wonderful.
Well, Ray, tell me, you done, I'm sure you done your research, how are we going to transition over from the one thing to the other one?
I've got all the information on the spreadsheet, we spoke to the Casell company today, anticipate that y'all would approve this, and I've got it on Excel spreadsheet, so I'm just ready to send it to him. I've already sent it to him one time, he just wants me to update it and get it back to him again.
Or they're gonna come and work with you to?
They will do it all remotely, they'll do it teams, meetings, in meeting, whatever.
You got somebody that you could call?
Oh, yeah.
And get?
Yeah, I mean, Matt calls us back, he, we put in a, a request this morning, he called back after ten today, so.
Sounds good, okay. Yeah, I just don't wanna go through this thing again, you know?
Well, it's going to be a transition, and we realize that, we know that, uh, we're probably gonna have a lot of customer calls, uh, just because we're changing from one company to the ne, to the other. But Maria and I both were worked to the bone getting this other company set up, and it took us probably until October to get the majority of it set up, so it took us a few months to get set up. I feel like we'll have to work to get this one set up. But the account numbers are not gonna change, they're gonna leave the account numbers the same, there'll be a few changes, not many.
Okay.
But the management companies that are local will be able to go on and put all of their cabins, say they have fifteen cabins, they can go associate themselves with all those cabins, and then they just go in there one time and put all their information in. That was how it's supposed to be with this other company.
The other one.
But.
Right.
And, and it, the other company, that part is working okay, except for the credits. Now, like I said, thirty-one thousand dollar credits, they have posted to the accounts of the citizens in that program that's not supposed to be there. And I've told them since obviously they've got a glitch in the program. I'm not a computer programmer, I know nothing about computer programming, but there's some kind of glitch there, or it wouldn't be doing that.
Right.
And I've tried to get them to understand that.
Have you talked to any other counties, our neighboring counties, Gilmore Union, or, uh?
Yes, sir.
County, any of these, have, do they, do they have this program we're gonna buy?
Not.
Anybody think we can, you know?
Well, no, other than.
Then we bounce for them.
The county has it under the financial program, Sherry works with it right now, so. I have not talked to them about the sale because they don't have. I have not talked to them about the sale because they don't have the sale, I don't believe.
But that's a whole different department, right?
Yeah.
It is, it will be a different department, yes, it will be, uh, the lodging tax, yes.
But if there is plus, we have an eight-year history.
We do have an eight-year history with them.
Not long as that, I think.
Their customer service, and they're reasonable on there, I think we paid around nine thousand, almost over nine thousand a year for their annual maintenance, so, and their customer service is exceptional.
Not only that, you, you feel comfortable with this going that route?
I do.
Well, I know when we first did this a year ago, it was a tremendous overtaking and, and adjustment.
You.
I mean, I'll just work continuously and, and to put this thing up, but, uh, hopefully, you know, you can take what you got and, and use it a little bit, and it won't be as hard. Do you feel like it'll be as hard because we had to even hire an extra person, remember?
A transition, you'd like a transition?
I don't think the transition will be that hard now.
And then the continue.
And the continue, I don't think it'll be that hard, what I want to do, and I probably will schedule all the local property management companies to come in and just sit down with us.
Good.
Maybe have a meeting with them, here in the jury assembly room or our conference room, and just explain what's going on. I've, I've kind of handed to some of them that we might be changing, uh, just so that they get on board with us. The account numbers will not change, they will probably have to have a new, uh, PIN number to get in. Uh, we will be sending emails to all the customers, letting them know that we're changing from this company to this company, and of course, they will be able to get online and pay their taxes, just like they're doing now.
When, uh, when you were talking to some of those, um, owners, did you have any pushback at all, or any feedback, did they give you any feedback at all?
I had a couple of property management companies saying, I'm so glad to hear that.
But you didn't have anybody complaining about switching over? You don't think we're losing?
Not yet, not yet, we ain't up there.
We're losing, but.
Well, the comment right now currently is, I can't rent my cabin, I'm not making any money on my cabin, and we know that there's at least twenty-eight-hundred cabins rentals in Fannin County right now. It was closer to three thousand, I've weeded out, we've weeded out about forty-five, fifty of those, a lot of them's called in and said, we're no longer renting, or we want to be inactive on the program, and the reason I said about forty-five is, that's what I've been keeping up with since May first, because we're adding new ones, and, and it's not on, maybe not on the list that I've already sent to Casel, so I've got to update that.
Okay, but we weren't a big user family for them, but also for you.
Well, true. I think it would be a lot, a lot better, let me just say that, I feel like it'd be a lot better. He did give us a demo about, the gentleman from Casel gave us a demo about, oh, two, three weeks ago, and it, it seemed pretty easy to go through, and, and, you know, we're familiar with Casel because we've already had it as the business license module, this will be the business tax module, so it's just two different things, so we're familiar with how Casel works.
How they work.
And Maria is too, she's familiar with it. So, yes, everything's going to have a transition period, we realize that.
Well, the thing about it is, and you, you know, this, Sherry knows, this is so big for our economy.
It is big for our economy.
How much, how, how much money we talked about?
This year, this, the audit's done, so this year it's six-point-eight that we collected in, uh, hotel rental, so you will get those final, those final figures here in a couple weeks, so that's the, that's the, that was the total that was collected.
Six-point-eight billion?
Eight million, in revenue, not taxes.
Seven billion dollars, that's a lot of money, Fannin County.
It is, it is.
And some change.
But we also have to.
Change.
We also have to make do that it went from three thousand to twenty-eight hundred.
Right.
And we've always have to keep that in mind, but, you know, there, there is a chance that.
The revenue might go down.
Yeah.
But, on the other note, Jamie and I said that we've taken a few off, we've also added new people, I mean, we've added two today, two new people, another one that called in to get a, uh, to get a short-term rental application, and they lacked something indeed or something that, that we needed, so we're adding, I'd say, three to five every week of new customers.
Right, that shows you how big it is.
And that's a lot of revenue too, because it's two-fifty per cabin, so.
Per cabin?
Per certificate, yes.
Okay.
Anything else, ma'am?
No, sir.
All right. Well, now, so I'm making a motion to, um, approve the change over to Casel, initial amount being eleven thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars to get started, uh, with a annual cost, at least for the first year, fifty-four-hundred-and-twelve dollars annually, uh, for this module. I'll make a motion to, um, to switch to Casel, and I'll ask for a second.
My second.
Call in favor? Thank you.
So, thank you. I forgot to tell you all this, I was nervous.
You didn't nervous?
Start talking, but this is just a copy of the sales proposal.
But thanks for, uh, thanks for looking into this, Maria.
We appreciate it, Ray.
Well, that, we did look at three other, we did look at two or three of the companies, this was.
It was the best.
User-friendly, it was cheaper, the other companies was thirty thousand, and one was, uh, eighty thousand, I believe, not homie to that exactly, but I'll tell you if you need to know, I didn't get too close.
Well, that's good, and, and the big thing is, like I said, we do have a connection with them from.
Yes, we have a good working connection with.
Already.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Marie.
All right, so now, we go to the MOU, between Fannin County Board Commissioners and North Georgia Community Action, um, better known as MANS, Mountain Area Transportation System. Um, gentlemen, this is, um, this will go term agreement coming from July first of twenty-five through June third of twenty-six. This is in, basically, an annual renewal of what we have done for Dodge County.
Yes, in place, yeah.
Yeah, basically, essentially, MANS, I think, so.
Any changes?
Uh, nothing I have seen, um, and this, I think is just, from what I've seen, is just a renewal.
If you put on page two, that is not further. Don't give you the terms of the amount.
Twenty-six thousand?
Nothing.
Much, three-hundred-and-twelve. Thousand, is that right? Three-hundred-and-twelve thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-three? Okay.
We both have the right to, um, I think we have a six-month termination, uh, both of us have that right to do, so.
We've worked, we're, we've.
Six days, I'm sorry, six months, we have.
I mean, I've, I've not had any problem with management.
That's a good service tape, I think.
It is.
Yes, great.
It'll be a good one, so.
Driving around transportation-wise.
Any other discussion, gentlemen?
I have none, though.
All right, and so I'm making a motion to approve the MOU, uh, member handle of understanding between Fannin County Board Commissioners and the North Georgia Community Action, as it refers to as MANS. I'll make that motion, ask for a second.
My second.
Call in favor? All right, that brings us to our, uh, public commentary. If anybody's got anything to say, please come up to my line. You've been patiently waiting.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Hensley, members, um, my name is Richard Belmont, I live at eighteen-twenty-eight Sunrock Mountain Road, I've been there since, uh, twenty-seventeen, and, um, I was here and spoke, uh, a couple of months ago, and thank you for embarking me into it with the conference, uh, but I'm here to talk about the same subject, and that is the condition of Sunrock Mountain Road. We're not looking for a superhighway, uh, but we've got one pothole that extends across the whole road, um, it's not something that you can drive around, it's, and it's right out in front of Dave and Jamie Wells' home tonight, and I know where that is. After our first meeting, uh, we did, we did see some presence, it looks like, uh, the city sent some folks up to clean the gutters out in the roads, got the leaves out of there, and it sure did look nice, the problem is that it kind of, with all, especially with the rain we've had, it's really contributed to further eroding those gutters, and we've got a lot of places on the road going up where, uh, you know, it's a road that there's not room for two cars to pass, both cars on the road very often, and, um, a lot of places we've got a tire width or less where you can go off the road and then you're going to be in a hazard, but some of these gutters now, if a car goes into there, it's going to be on its, on its door, one side or the other, which way it's going, and you're going to need a tow truck to get out. Um, so, thank you for that, but I think that while it looked good, it didn't really help the erosion, uh, potential, and, and the rain that we just had in the last two months has really exacerbated that issue. But, um, we are just looking for someone to come and deal with that area, since I've been here since twenty-seventeen, that air, that specific area we're talking about, uh, in that term, it's a climbing or descending, depend upon which way you're going, and it's a, it's a sharp turn right there, so it gets a lot of extra wear from, um, propane trucks, uh, there's a lot of construction down the mountain, uh, we've got trucks, large vehicles bringing materials up there, and, uh, as a matter of fact, in the last week or so, I noticed it looked like probably a homeowner on the Sunni went and bought a bag or two of asphalt and tried to lay it in there themselves, which I don't know if it helped, and, um, since last weekend, it looks like someone's tried to shovel some dirt in there, and it's just making a real big mess out of it, so.
What's the name of that road?
It's Sunrock Mountain Road.
Where's that, where's that off of?
Uh, tennis court, so two to tennis court road, first right is Sunrock Mountain Road, it, it kind of tees at a, at a nailbox farm, Sunrock Mountain Trace goes up to the right.
Is that, is that the county road?
Yes, sir, it is.
Is this the county road?
Yep, and, um, we were just, uh, I'm just here to ask for some consideration to fix that, you know, the, the road needs repairs in a lot of places, but if we could take care of that one spot in that turn there, because you just can't go around that, and it's a slow down to a creep to get through there, and, um.
Well, I will reach out to him again tomorrow.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Have a, might take a look at that and see what we need to.
Appreciate the opportunity. Yes, sir.
Appreciate you coming up.
Sure.
All right, well, closed public commentary, brings us down to, uh, executive session. Gentlemen, y'all have a need for executive session, see?
I have none.
All right, Matt Benson, I'll make a motion to adjourn, ask for a second.
Second.
Call in favor? Thank you, y'all, for coming in.